Good evening, we're calling to order for the Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Planning Commission meeting at six P M. I will start with a roll call.
Okay, Chair Natasha Bosso.
Here.
Vice Chair Joan Stewart. Commissioner John Dynan.
Here.
Commissioner Ben Rubin. Commissioner Tidys Zamora.
Here.
And in the audience, we have our alternate Steve Link and Michael Sid Alterman. Thank you.
So we'll start with a conflict of interest. Any Planning Commission member of or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. None? Public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence. Make sure your comments directly to the Planning Commission members.
Pleasure to be here. Nice to see these smiling faces. My name is David Avalon, and I just have a little presentation here, and I just want to ask.
Excuse me. This public comment period is for anything that's not on the agenda.
I believe this is not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we've been corresponding about a project, and so I just assumed you were going to speak about that project.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have a large group here, but I'll speak to the members. Does everybody here understand what carbon credits are? Yes, no? Any reaction? None, okay. The theory is to encourage companies to reduce CO2. This is how it works. A government agency, and that will be me, because I'm going to take in all the money. I charge a lot for my time, tax taxpayers' money. And I determine the CO2 limits. So that gentleman over there is quite tall, so he expels a lot of CO2. So I'm going to fine him. And this gentleman here is fairly short, so he doesn't expel a whole lot of CO2, so I'm going to give him credits. Again, it's just all arbitrary. So the tall gentleman over there, I'm going to call him Ford and Chevrolet. I'm going to call this gentleman Tesla. Ford and Chevrolet is a problem because they produce gasoline-driven engines. This gentleman produces electric engines that theoretically don't produce any CO2. So I just established a credit. I put CO2 credits on the market, and I just, you know, the market says anywhere from forty to eighty dollars a ton of CO2 once it's sequestered. So I'm going to find this gentleman. Again, it's all arbitrary. I'm going to find him a hundred dollars for producing too much CO2. And then this gentleman is going to sell me his credits. And so I'm going to take his money, keep a few bucks of it, but I'm going to give this gentleman a hundred dollars. So Ford Company and Chevrolet is short a hundred dollars, and this gentleman, Elon Musk, is a hundred dollars richer. And by the way, in the last five or six years, Elon Musk has made one point two billion dollars in carbon credits. So the question is, who has benefited here? He's lost money theoretically. He's made money for really doing nothing, doing his job. And then how about the people out here? What have they gained? Well, it didn't cost them anything. Well, it does, because that gentleman over there is, to cover the cost of that hundred dollars that I've just taken from him by force, he's going to raise the price of his cars. And so all of us here pay initially, we the people always pay. So we're going to pay in the price of higher vehicles. Now, so basically, the question is, the whole goal is here to reduce CO2. So we went through the carbon credit process as it is, right? But the real question is, has anything happened to the CO2 in this room? No, nothing. We've all breathed, we've exhaled, but what did happen? It's called a transfer of wealth, ladies and gentlemen. Transfer of wealth from we the people to Elon Musk, and he makes a profit. For every penny he spends, he adds ten percent. So he may have spent a hundred dollars, but he charges us a hundred and ten. So the only losers, again, are we the people. So basically, does everybody get my point about carbon credits?
Point of order, sir. We're not allowed to discuss anything that you bring up on the public comment period.
Well, that's SMU, by the way, but that's okay. Thank you very much.
Have any other public comments via Zoom or anything? Jamie Agar, if you want to unmute and make your comment, you have three minutes.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. My name's Jamie Agar. I live at seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue, Modesto. That's in the unincorporated area of Stanislaus County, but within the proposed project area of the River Rock development. You've heard me speak several times over the past few years. I want to be extremely clear, especially for staff in my comments this evening. One of my concerns has been that in twenty sixteen, fifteen hundred acres was added to Riverbank's sphere of influence, not annexed, but to their sphere of influence that is now being developed as crossroads rest. As I understand it, approximately four hundred acres has been annexed at this point. I have made the point that I don't know that the need has been shown to add another fifteen hundred-plus acres to Riverbank's sphere of influence, not to be annexed, but to Riverbank's sphere of influence with the Riverwalk proposal. It actually proposes to add a thousand acres to be annexed, and the remainder would be added to the sphere. Another of my points of clarification is that when we have said many times in the past that up to three thousand homes would be added in the Riverwalk proposal, that is because the notice of preparation that came out in June of twenty twenty-one talked about a flexible design, quote-unquote flexible design, that would allow up to twenty-five percent more homes than was discussed in the notice of preparation. My main concern beyond the need and the other points I've made is that homes should be built on soils of lesser quality, not on property and soils of prime ag land, which is defined by the California State Department of Conservation. Homes should be built on soils of lesser quality where there are plenty of acres available in Riverbank to develop them. Thank you.
Thank you. No others? Okay, so we are going to close the public comment period. Moving on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the Planning Commission. So item two point one, posting the agenda. The agenda for the August fifteenth Planning Commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center Bulletin Board, City Hall North and South Bulletin Boards, Post Office, City Website, and email to the library on August eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And item two point two, approval of the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda. This provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission or staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order.
Item two point one and two point two.
Okay.
Okay, roll call. Chair Bosso.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stewart. Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
Commissioner Zamora.
Yes.
Okay, it's approved five oh.
Item two point three, approval of the minutes of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, having been read by the individual planning commissioners and stands approved as submitted.
I just want to add that Chair Bosso, you'll have to abstain because you're absent.
Item two point three.
Second motion.
Okay, roll call. Chair Bosso is abstaining. So Vice Chair Stewart. Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
And Commissioner Zamora.
Yes.
Number three on the agenda, the Planning Commission public hearings. The public notice for items three point one and three point two were published on August second, twenty twenty-three in the Riverbank News. Item three point three was published July fifth, twenty twenty-three in the Riverbank News and was continued to the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting from July eighteenth by a vote of five to zero. So item three point one, Architecture and Site Plan Review, zero five dash twenty twenty-three for the Stanislaus Regional Housing Authority, zero third in Stanislaus Streets, Riverbank nine five three six seven.
Do we have someone to report on that?
Yes. Donna Kenny, Planning and Building Manager. As you mentioned, this project is coming forward through the Stanislaus Regional Housing Authority, and it would be a community center on the currently, well, it's not vacant, but an underutilized parcel at Third and Stanislaus Streets. So this is Site Plan Review, zero five dash two zero two three. It's a seventeen hundred and fifty square foot senior center, community center, as I mentioned, at Third and Stanislaus Streets. In this APN map, you can see the location of the project is in the yellow there, right at the corner. The green parcels that I'm showing there are senior housing. It's downtown and located near the proposed project. Here's an aerial view of the same thing, where you see the little yellow house there in that parking lot. That's where the senior center would be located. And then off to the right, those dark blue and light blue blocks, both sides of Stanislaus Street is senior housing. This is the current street view, and it is looking east from Third Street. So the general plan designation for this site is mixed use, which allows commercial residential mixture of the two. In the downtown specific plan, the zoning is downtown core. So as far as the permitted use goes, I mentioned the zoning is downtown core. The section of the zoning is cultural and civic use, and under permitted uses, quasi-public uses, including similar to conference centers, teen centers, senior centers, et cetera. So the downtown specific plan does see this as a permitted use. This is our site plan. As you can see, at the very corner of Third and Stanislaus, the yellow, light yellow block there is the proposed location of the senior center. There is parking. You can see the ADA parking up next to the building. There's landscaping around the edges of the project. And the entrance would be through the alley off to the right. It's an existing alley that runs between the parking lot and the senior housing right now. This is the floor plan. It's basically in two rooms, a community room and a meeting room. And there's restrooms as well, and a couple, I think a storage room and and the equipment room. Here's the elevations of the building. As you can see, it looks like a two-story structure, but it's the upper level windows that give you that effect. The building will appear a little bit larger than some of the other buildings downtown and really anchor that corner for its use. These are the colors and materials of the stucco and the trim and the roof. They all mesh together nicely. So for the findings for the Architectural and Site Plan Review of the building, Policy Design two point three, we use this one a lot. The city will have appropriate signage, traffic control devices if necessary on the property. Because we do want to accommodate the mixture of pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicular traffic, especially since the senior center is so close to the senior housing. We may see quite a few of the residents walking to the senior center. Policy Design eight point three, the city will require the use of durable, high-quality building materials. That will be the case. Policy Design ten point one, the city requires access for pedestrians and bicyclists to provide the most direct access from sidewalks and from the parking area. There will be a bicycle rack near the building. Policy Design ten point seven, city does require a strong pedestrian orientation. The way the building is designed, streets, sidewalks, this focuses on commercial and mixed-use projects. And then we do encourage the construction of continuous building facades with attractive window treatments, and then minimal or no setback distance from the sidewalks. If you'll think back to the map that I showed. Corner with sidewalks on Third and Stanislaus adjacent to the building. The project is exempt for secret guidelines for infill development projects. It's normally a project that's less than five acres. There's utilities in the streets. There's public access to it. It does meet all the criteria of Section fifteen, three, three, two, A through E. And we recommend that the Planning Commission approve Architectural and Site Plan Review, oh five dash twenty twenty-three, based on the findings that I discussed previously. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you would like to hear from the public first, that would be fine, too.
Can we open it up to public comment on this project? It looks like there is no comment from the audience. Is there anything on Zoom? No? Okay, so we'll close public comment, and if we have any questions.
Chair, I have a question for Donna. I think this is great. We need to see the same. Stanislaus Regional Housing Authority, is that a county operation, or is that under the city of Riverbank?
I think it's a joint program. My mind's just not working. Yeah, there you go. Somebody from the project.
Yes, we.
Your name and?
Oh, Kim Ryan, Stanislaus Regional Housing Authority.
Thank you.
Stanislaus Regional Housing Authority is a housing authority. I do. Sorry, my voice is very small. And we serve eight counties right now, and we started with Stanislaus, but went into Mono, also Calaveras, Amador, those rural areas. We also are involved with Riverbank Housing Authority. So we operate and administer housing first vouchers, and we partner with development and those types of things here in Riverbank as well.
Thank you. Partnership was the word I was looking for.
Oh, question. So it would be under your administration?
Riverbank Housing Authority, yeah, we do the operations for Riverbank Housing.
Will this be limited to authority of the city of Riverbank? Or will it be open to your eight-county area for use by anyone within the eight counties?
Is your question that who can use the community center?
Correct.
It's for the seniors, public housing folks that live near there, and for the community of Riverbank. And that's typically who is going to want to use the.
So you would have an onsite manager?
We have the office across the street for the housing authority, and that would be where people can call or go in to see if they can use the community center.
Terrific, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No other questions? Do we have a recommendation?
Second.
Who was the first on that? Okay. Okay, roll call. Chair Bosso.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stewart. Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
And Commissioner Zamora.
Yes.
Okay, it's approved five oh.
Right, item three point two. Tentative subdivision map, zero one dash twenty twenty-three, and development plan, zero four dash twenty twenty-three, Pocket Avenue Senior Apartments at thirty-three eighteen Pocket Avenue.
Good evening again, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, there was a bit of a mix-up with the public notice sign that had to be posted on the property where one applicant thought the other was going to post it, so they didn't get it up by August fifth. So unfortunately, we have to continue their item to the next meeting if that is the will of the Planning Commission. Staff is working on another project to try to get a special Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, September seventh. So in all likelihood, should it be continued, then this item would be on the agenda for that meeting.
Do we have any objections to continuing?
Or should we continue this item until the September seventh meeting, if it takes place?
Chair, if we could make sure, would you take any public comments on this item, just in case?
Do we have any public comments on item three point two for the Pocket Avenue Senior Apartments? Something on Zoom? Okay, we'll close the public comment period.
Maybe we should just add that it would be continued to whenever the next scheduled meeting will be, because we might not have that September seventh, so it'll just be to the next scheduled meeting.
Oh, modified.
Yeah. So I'll the roll call for the continuance. So Chair Bosso.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stewart. Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
And Commissioner Zamora.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three point three, conditional use permit, zero one dash twenty twenty-three, the Emetus Advanced Products Riverbank Incorporated at fifty-three hundred Claus Road, Modesto.
Good evening again. So I will be doing a short presentation to kind of set the stage and talk about this project. And we have the applicants here who will follow up behind me and give you more details and a little bit more technical explanation of what their project is about. Thank you. Okay, as mentioned, this is a conditional use permit. What we are looking at is the use of the biofuel facility at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. We've been looking at the specific plan to make sure it's allowed there. We've been looking at the EIR and the final EIR, as well as some adopting documents. And so, as mentioned, this item is the review of the proposed Emetus facility use as it relates to the Riverbank Army ammunition plant, specific plan, and the environmental impact report. For those of you who know where it is, drive by. This is kind of what the current elevations look like right now, except for the rain. The site plan of the Riverbank Industrial Complex, on the very far right, you'll see Claire Bell, and then some empty-looking parcels, which are in the specific plan as commercial, but they're kind of on hold at the moment, pending what the North County corridor needs as far as right-of-way or drainage basins. Most of the other white between that area and the yellow area, that's the existing Riverbank Industrial Complex that the Army built and used back in the fifties and sixties. The yellow location is where the Emetus is proposed to construct their facility. So at the very bottom of this rectangle, that would be Claus Road right there. And then to the left of that yellow is where you see the parking for campers and RVs. So to the left is north, and to the right is south. It's a little difficult to see, but this is a site plan of the facility, and you can see the building and the tanks and such that would be put within that yellow area. Off of Claus, there's a proposal to not only have the main building or the main parking lot entrance, but a second one as well to help with any truck traffic coming through. They will be able to get off Claus Road and not cause any sort of a backup. Emetus is also participating in another traffic and engineering study to look at what sort of improvements to Claus Road might be needed to accommodate this traffic. So this plant actually began operation in nineteen forty-three as an aluminum reduction plant for the military. It closed in forty-four and was used for storage for eight years. It reopened in fifty-two to again provide aluminum for the military. And after that, as production waned, the Army allowed business leases at the site to use those empty spaces. The city became a property manager while the Army remediated, removed some sightings, removed some dirt to try to clean up the site. In twenty eighteen, we released an RFP and selected Emetus to manage the site. In twenty twenty-two, the existing business leases were transferred to them. And in twenty twenty-three, the city has just And in twenty twenty-three, the city has just begun reviewing and issuing permits for the site. Up until this point, everything kind of started and ended with the Army. Many times we didn't know what was going on out there, but now they are working with the city. We are getting to see, in fact, this is the first permit that I am issuing from the Riverbank Industrial Complex. But since the city hasn't actually accepted the turnover from the Army of the site, then they are the final review before construction of any of the projects out there can begin. So the Riverbank Army Ammunition Plant specific plan uses. It does discuss industrial and business park zoning for the site, which permits manufacturing uses as well as a mixture of light manufacturing and office spaces. The Ametis project does per does propose some office space as well as some larger buildings for the manufacturing uses. So areas with this designation are subject to performance standards to ensure against noise, traffic, safety, light spillage, et cetera. So there is a mitigation and modern mitigation monitoring report that these projects have to adhere to as part of the environmental analysis, the CEQA document that was done and approved. The specific plant plan does offer some flexibility. In the existing industrial areas, a project can retain buildings. They could allow for additional buildings. They could allow for the removal and modification to existing buildings. It is asked that we maintain a historic character for the project there for projects. Therefore, the city is requiring architectural and site plan review for these buildings. This is just a conditional use permit at this time. Trying to determine if the facility does meet the specific plan requirements and is is a good fit for that site. They will come back. If approved, they will come back for architectural and site plan review when their plans are fully developed. And we are to preserve the viability of this area for future industrial uses. That was the last bullet point within the specific plan in this section. So project details, this review is the proposed facility use of manufacturing. The Riverbank Industrial Complex is about a hundred and forty acres total and the Ametis facility is about twenty-nine acres, give or take. They are proposing office and warehouse for their facility. They feel that it should be about twenty-four months of construction. And once they are up and running, they would be running twenty-four seven. Product would come in and out by both truck and by train. So there is a final EIR that on the Riverbank and Army Ammunition Plant specific plan. It was adopted in twenty thirteen. As I mentioned before, there is mitigation measures that all projects out there have to adhere to. And in fifteen sixteen four and of the CEQA guidelines, it states the decision-making body shall consider an addendum with the FEIR prior to making a decision on the project. Therefore, the city not only gave you a copy of the specific plan, but the EIR itself, the FEIR and the documents that showed that they were approved by the city council. So the purpose of an addendum is to describe the facility and its impacts and analyze them in the context of the specific plan EIR. There's usually a CEQA checklist and significant thresholds that they look for. And some of these items that are on the checklist, I'm just going to put a few of them out there because there's over a dozen. So aesthetics, as part of the checklist, they may ask, does it affect a scenic vista? Is it a source of substantial light? For air quality, will the project violate air quality standards or cause an increase in pollutants? Mission mitigation measures in the specific plan are there for air quality issues. Hydrology and water quality, they look at whether or not the plant would violate water quality standards. They intend to use existing wells at the site. Would it decrease groundwater supplies? Well, studies have shown that the EIR for this specific plan had looked at how much water that all the industries there would use if the if the site were built out. And even if you take into consideration the businesses that are out there right now using water and the amount of water that Ametis would like to use, it is still well below the amount that the Army thought was, or excuse me, the EIR thought was acceptable for the Riverbank Industrial Complex. They also looked at noise. Would there be an increase in ambient noise or cause excessive ground vibrations? Transportation, is there a conflict within existing transportation plan? Would there be inadequate emergency access? As I mentioned, for this section, there is additional studies being done to see what sort of improvements should be made to Claus Road. Utilities and service systems, how will it impact wastewater treatment capacity or cause insufficient water supplies? Ametis will have their own wastewater treatment plan out there because they hope to capture and recycle and reuse a certain percentage of that water. So the specific plan EIR, and this is when the Army did that document, determined the impact of the build out of the specific plan is less insignificant. So the facility is to be located within the plan area that was evaluated in the specific plan. And it does not represent a change to the project that was analyzed in the EIR. So now the, this presentation will be followed by a presentation from the applicants to kind of dig down a little deeper in this project. Yes. There you go.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is Jarrett Hollis. I'm with Ametis. And I am located at the facility here in Riverbank. Wanted to give you some more information about our project. And hopefully this will give you information that you're looking for. I was going to start out originally with some history of how Ametis came to be in communication with the city. Ms. Kenny hit a lot of those timeframes. The only thing I would like to add is after the RFP was put out for master developer services at the Riverbank Ammo Plant, Ametis did submit a proposal as master developer and with our intentions to build a renewable fuels facility. We signed the documents with the city December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one to accommodate the lease that was put in place for that. And as of April first, twenty twenty-two, we took over operations for the city. And today, we're talking about our conditional use permit for the renewable fuel facility we're looking to build. Next slide, a little bit of information on California's low carbon fuel standard. Not a lot, just a little. And the idea is to understand that low carbon fuel standard is designed to decrease the carbon intensity of California's transportation fuel pool, provide an increasing range of low carbon and renewable alternatives, which reduce petroleum dependency and achieve air quality benefits. The other side, it's it's been put into law in California. Governor Newsom has called for more ambitious climate action. State's climate plan would create four million new jobs, is what they're projecting, slashing greenhouse gas emissions by eighty-five percent and cut oil uses by ninety-four percent. I believe that pathway is to twenty forty-five. Mid global global climate talks, the scoping plan lays out the world's first detailed pathway to carbon neutrality by twenty forty-five. And again, as signed into law by Governor Newsom. Low carbon fuels are critical to the transition from fossil fuels to electric hydrogen technologies. We at Ametis are committed to assisting in the transition by being not only a leading producer of low carbon fuels, but also developing a circular low carbon fuel economy, including ethanol, sustainable aviation fuel, renewable diesel and renewable natural gas. And most in the ethanol, renewable natural gas are at our Keys facility. Ametis SAF and RD facility will have a direct impact in placing the city of Riverbank on the forefront of California's push to carbon neutrality by twenty forty-five. This is a diagram we have on our website. It's identifying the circular economy that Ametis is putting together for feedstocks versus fuel produced. The item three is a Riverbank Renewable Jet and Diesel Facility in blue. One of the feedstocks we'll use for the facility will be the distillers corn oil that is produced at our Keys facility for fuel ethanol production. So that's another use for products currently that are being used to produce renewable ethanol. Renewable oils, orchard wood waste is used as feedstock and production for renewable jet and diesel fuel using zero carbon items. There's been a lot of discussion on orchard wood waste. And orchard wood waste will not be a part of this initial build out. It is an item that can be added later. The differentiation is we would be using orchard wood waste to be generating our hydrogen part of our process that does the conversion from renewable diesel into aviation fuel. And that beginning process will be an all encompassing process, making our available hydrogen from our feedstocks instead. And if we get to the point where we can process in the the orchard feedstocks, that'll be at a later date. Description of process itself. Feedstock will be oils and tallow. Oils will come from California. They'll come from outside of California, come in by rail, come in by truck. And there will be some import as well. Ametis has a biodiesel facility in India where we have a large feedstock of tallow. And we'll be looking to bring some of that tallow over here to process into renewable diesel and sustainable aviation fuel. The process is hydroprocessing process where we have a high yield, it's ninety to ninety-five percent versus the traditional process for making biodiesel has around a fifty percent yield. Two products, renewable SAF, renewable diesel. We will have byproducts, renewable propane, renewable anaptha. Those will be converted and used as hydrogen source for the conversion process from diesel to SAF. And that is the end of that small presentation. Thank you very much. I wanted to thank Ms. Ms. Kenny and all of you for working on this project for us. It's a big project. We're working very hard on it on our side and hope that we can be a big part of the Riverbank community for years to come. Do I take questions? Or no? Okay. Any questions?
Verify, I believe I read that in the beginning you proposed drill for eight weeks, twenty-four seven?
That is a.
The ground?
That's a future project. It is not a project that we're looking at here in this application. So that one is more concerned with the first stratification well to see what's under us. And in the hopes of a future sequestration. But that is not this project. That is the most common question I get too. Anything else? Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Hey, now we would like to open it up to public comment.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. Listening, listening to Donna's. Pardon me? David Avola, I'm from Oakdale, we the people of the area. Donna's presentation, and I was a little concerned about what was going on here because it made made Emeritus sound like a project or a property manager managing company. In reality, their energy, as he mentioned. But the project is pretty deceptive. He mentioned wood, what brought my attention to this project was a newspaper article in Modesto B that said that Emeritus was going to be using wood, wood chips and whatnot from the forest and from the from the orchards in the area, which we all realize when we're driving around, we see orchards being pushed out and ground up, not burnt anymore, but ground up, which could be used for fertilizer, but it could also be used for fuel. It's called the the process that I'm familiar with is thermical chemical conversion, which apparently they're not going to do. But thermochemical conversion can take a product like wood or hog manure and in thirty-five minutes make fuel. So the 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 fact that they own the Keys project, the Keys Ethanol Plant. He didn't mention that they shut that down last year because it wasn't profitable. Now, don't get me wrong, this project is profitable to him when they build it. Because we the people again are forced to spend about thirty percent in cash and and oh, what would you call them? Tax credits, which come out of our pocket because then we have to pay more tax credits. That project will pay for itself the first year, but then it doesn't pay for itself as the fact that they shut down the Keys plant approves. So what is their profit center? Their profit center is the sequestration wells. Because as I said earlier, that sequestration, they're going to sell carbon credits. Now, carbon credits, as I said earlier, is nothing more than I have this for, I have this for sale, would anybody like to buy it? Because Elon Musk is producing electric cars. Again, it doesn't make any sense. Those wells, as again, published in the newspaper, they're going to generate two hundred million dollars a year for sequestering CO2 in to the ground. Now, that represents if we took everybody in the Stanislaus County for one year, the fuel and my estimated cost to produce the compressors because of sequestering CO2 out of the air is not an easy task. It's going to take highly specialized equipment. It's going to take a lot of energy and then they compress that CO2 into a liquid. And then once they press it into a liquid, then they pump it down into the soil. Where they have no idea where it goes from there. But I can tell you one thing, when CO2 expands from a liquid to a gas, which it will, when it goes down there and gets heated, expands over seven point seven point seven times. So what's going to happen in volume? I remember, again, simple math. If you took a two mile radius from, is this thing on? Okay. Thank you. If you take a two mile radius from the Army plant and you put that volume of CO2 that they plan on putting down in the ground and it expands a seven time, that in a two mile radius, which is a huge area, is going to displace enough water to push that water up seven nine hundred and eighty-eight feet per year. And that as the as the EIR states, that that's salt water down there. So that water is going to be pushed up to the surface. What's that going to do to our freshwater aquifers, ladies and gentlemen? It's going to ruin them. We're going to have to put in desalinization plants, which we should have already, by the way, but that's that's a whole nother story. So that, again, if we take all the fuel that all the people in Stanislaus County for one year burn buys, that cost of them compressors and drilling the well and then pumping that water down there, maintaining the compressors and then the hundred, the two hundred million dollars a year that they're going to benefit from it, from taking our money out of our pockets is it would cost a dollar two per gallon. Now, is anybody here really happy with five dollar gasoline?
Three minutes is up.
Thank you. So anyway, the the main thing is that she forgot to mention that this and it's in the EIR and I don't know if anybody read it. I read it and it's not really fun reading, but I I've made EIRs in my lifetime. So that EIR states that there's going to be three hundred and sixty-eight trucks per day, ladies and gentlemen. Three hundred and sixty-eight trucks per day going in and out of that plant. And where are they going? They're going to the Port of Oakland. They're going to San Francisco. What do you get from the Port of Oakland? They're not getting stuff from California from the Port of Oakland. They're getting it from India. It's four hundred and fifty-seven thousand. It's 457,000 gallons per day that's coming into here. And anyone who tells us that they could help in the environment, people, they are bringing pollution into the valley.
Sir, sir, it's, you, it's time to wrap it up. You have to, you have to conclude. Your time is up.
Did you guys get my point though? Thank you for turning back on.
No, 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 sir. No, you're out of order. Sir, please sit.
It's like this, and everybody knows when I shake this and make pop for this, what's going to happen? That CO2 is going to come back to the surface. So it's going to come back to the surface.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Eaton. I live in Sonora, California. But I own the property directly across from your proposed plant. I don't like this at all. I would like to know, you said that everything's coming in and out of trucks. Correct? And train. So you're going to be taking diesel fuel out onto Claus Road. Now, I did check and that property over there is, is not part of Riverbank and you have no, no idea when you're going to annex that or what the zoning will be. I have already had to rent Stanislaus County and Caltrans part of, again, again, part of my property. They have taken over an acre, almost two acres now of my property there over the years. And now with this plant coming and all these trucks going in and out and you're telling me they're, you don't know how they're going to have the roads in there and what's going to have to be done. I'm going to have to look at that project over there and hear it and see the lights 24/7 if I ever decide to move back there. Now, why aren't you interested in putting the property across the road and down Claus Road? And helping people get that put into commercial? You're all interested in the project they have, but you're not interested in helping anyone out there with their property and how it's going to affect our property values. I've heard nothing from you telling me how, what you're going to do for the residents out there. You have a lot of people that live out there on little ranches. What are you going to do for them? Well, nothing. Right? You're only worried about 50 jobs. I'm not happy and I am going to pursue this. Thank you.
Hey, it looks like we have a comment on Zoom, phone number ending in, was it 3108? 3108, you can unmute your mic and you'll have three minutes for your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is my name is Evelyn Halbert. Now, I don't live out there by the ammunition plant. But I do live in town where the, the railroad, the truck route, the train routes are going to be. We don't get, we don't get notices mailed to us. My first and biggest complaint is public noticing on this thing. This is supposed to be a public meeting, public hearing. And yet there was no notice for it other than back in July, a notice came out in the Riverbank News, July 6th, and we got it for the July 18th meeting. That meeting had nothing there, no staff report, no documents, no nothing. So the planning commission moved it to August 15th tonight. And according to your own reporting here, when you moved it, the staff then prepared junk drive for the commissioners containing the Pacific Plan DIR, Pacific Plan FEIR, Plan Attachment Resolution, all this stuff, EIR, secret findings, everything. So they could begin reviewing these large documents before the next meeting. That's on page eight of staff report. You had lots of time. We did not get any notice that they were available. You publish a notice, didn't publish, you posted a notice uptown that said it was being continued this meeting. That was it. There was nothing noticed in the paper on August, when the public notice came out on August 2nd for this meeting. It was listed the other two. This meeting was not listed on it. We got no notice whatsoever. We got nothing until last Friday when the consent, when the notice came out, the agenda came out. We had four days to look at all of this stuff that you had all month to look at. That is totally inadequate for, for public noticing. Now, I have no way could I get through all of this stuff, but I got to a part of it to ask questions. I sent written comments. Did you get them? You didn't receive them. Okay, that's par for the course. You do have them. Okay. Okay. Because this should not be, this should have been continued. There was no notice whatsoever, except for the one thing back in July. And, and four days to look at all those documents is ridiculous. Okay, on the water and the sewer. On both the water and
Your third, three minutes is up.
I'm not even that done yet. You didn't give us any notice and now we don't get to talk? I want to know what they're going to do about the traffic.
Okay, no other comments. The three minutes was up. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, so I'm going to close the public comment. And do we have a motion for item 3.3?
Make a motion to well, let me, let me preface this. I'd like a motion on the floor, a motion seconded and then conversation about that motion. Okay, I will make a motion to approve a resolution 2023-010.
I will second. Okay, roll call.
Hold it for conversation. Really torn on this subject. I live in southeast Riverbank, which is very close to the ammo plant. You say the eight week drilling is not in this timeframe, but they get your word with the traffic impact on that area. Seems to be terrific, horrific, horrific is a better word. Right now, Clarabelle Road between Terminal and Roselle is a parking lot half the time. The quality of life in that area is just going downhill by the day. And I would I would like to hear from the other commissioners, any thoughts they have on the viability or the positive aspects of this project versus the negative.
Well, I think some of the traffic issues will be resolved with the North County Corridor. They're supposed to be starting construction in the well, I know they've been doing eminent domain acquiring properties and such, so I, I figure that that would kind of alleviate some of the traffic concerns that are going to be around Claus. Especially I know Terminal, that, that whole area, but I, it seems like it's supposed to be kind of rerouted and, you know, made to be a lot better. So that's something. I would kind of assume they would probably want to do as much as they could through, through rail. I mean, especially if there's a lot of this going to be coming from, you know, other, other areas. I, I don't know what the operations would be like. I, I've seen the, the plant in, in Keys. And I've, I've heard a lot about what they're doing with ethanol. I don't, in my mind, I mean, I don't know about the drilling, if that's not something that's going to be happening right away. But I think that, you know, the renewable fuel is something of the future that we should really consider. Those are my thoughts.
My concerns regarding the project, again, in trade for 50 jobs. Sure, the rail is going to be alleviate a lot of road traffic, but is the rail in that area built to sustain the amount of traffic that it's going to be receiving? I don't believe it receives a lot of, a use right now and with the more use that comes, the more deterioration is going to occur. It also going right through the residential neighborhood is a concern in terms of, you know, making sure that the rail is secure. And then my other concern is although this particular approval does not involve CO2 sequestration, that is another concern based on the displacement below ground and the proximity it is to properties and how it could impact property rights down the road.
Any commissioner for a while because I love this city. And so all of my decisions are based, is this pro or con for the, the people that have chosen to make this, this city their home? I've done a little bit of research which kind of en, enhance and reinforce my doubts as to the benefits of the city for this particular project.
Offer your input.
Okay, ready, ready for a roll call? Chair Vasso? Yes. Vice Chair Stewart? Commissioner Dinen? Commissioner Rubin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zamora?
I just wanted to share that this decision, thank you. I know it took a lot of thought on your part. This can be appealed to the city council, so you might see it coming on a future meeting.
Okay, moving on to number four of the agenda, planning commission comments. Are there any other additional comments tonight? Okay, number five, county referral and correspondence or information, anything to report?
No, I haven't received a county referral since the last time we met.
Staff comments?
The only comment I have is you're all aware that we're trying to maybe have a special planning commission meeting on Thursday, the 7th of September. And I have to do a little bit of research, look at some project information tomorrow. But I should have a, an answer for you on that by the end of the day tomorrow.
And if that is all, we will adjourn. Our next regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for October 17th. The September 19th has been canceled, but we are potentially having the September 7th, a special meeting.
Yes, I will be out of town starting September 15th. So that's why the 19th. Actually, well, actually no, back to Nebraska. My mother-in-law is in hospice. And well, she's 99, so it's not unexpected, but she actually wasn't supposed to last the weekend, but she's a tough old bird. So yeah, we will be going back to spend some time with family.
But we'll see you in October. Well, September 7th, maybe in October. Thank you. This is, meeting is adjourned.